It is six o'clock. I'm calling this meeting to order of the budget hearing for the Germantown School District. Residents are allowed to vote at these meetings, so the residents should be sitting in these two sections on this side. If you're a non-resident, you're welcome to be here, but we'd like you to be over here so our voting public can all be together. Item B, official meeting notification, Dr. Reuter.
Public notice of all meetings has been given by communication from the superintendent's office to the public, to those news media who have requested such notices, and to the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, Northwest Now, Express News, and the West Bend Daily News. Public notice has also been posted in schools throughout the Germantown School District and on the Germantown School District website.
Thank you. Item C, energy exemption and debt notification. Ms. Altondor.
Thank you, Brian. To start off this meeting, we are going to go over the energy exemption financials. In 2015 to 2017 biennial budget, the state added a line to the revenue limit calculation that allowed districts to borrow funds to purchase equipment that would then in the future reduce costs in utilities as energy efficiencies. The district did take advantage of that and borrowed $7 million in 2015, and at this time, we have a balance of $3 million left over with this borrow. It is a 10-year borrow, so the borrow is up in 2025. The total borrow with interest is approximately $8.3 million. State statute says that we have to go over this every year, and the key areas in which we have to go over are the total amount, which is the 8.3, as well as the projected cost savings. At the bottom right of the slide is about approximately $4.2 million as of the eight years that we've had this borrow. So in 2025, this borrow will be paid off, and then the line on the revenue limit, which is an additional revenue for the school district, will also be eliminated.
Thank you. Item D, presentation of the budget. Dr. Reuter.
Turn it over to Ms. Altondor.
Starting this part of the meeting, I wanted to go over the purpose of these two meetings. So we are going to have a meeting at six o'clock, which is right now, for the budget hearing, and then we will have an annual meeting following. We will have a regular board meeting as well, but I'm just going to go through the two current meetings. The meeting that we're in, the 2023-24 budget hearing, I will go over a high level of the budget that is being presented to the community today. And then at the annual meeting at 6:30, it will be five resolutions that are presented to the community for approval. The first one is regarding the community service tax. It's a tax that school districts are allowed to increase their revenue that the property taxes, property taxers would pay because the public uses our facilities. The second resolution is regarding the property taxes, so this is the amount that the school district is requesting from the property taxpayers to be assessed on their bill in December. The third resolution we will be coming for approval is for real estate. That gives the board the approval between this annual meeting and the next annual meeting to be able to buy, sell real estate or property in the best interest of the district. The fourth resolution will be in regards to the board salaries for the 23-24 school year. And then the fifth resolution will be allowing the board to set the annual meeting date and time within the state statutes. When reviewing the information for the budget hearing, I'm going to be talking about the fund descriptions. DPI, or the state, has districts, school districts follow WOOFER, which is the Wisconsin Uniform Financial Accounting Requirements. Basically, there's 16-digit account codes in which each one of the digits represents a certain category. So the funds that I'm going to go over are the general fund. The general fund is where the majority of our expenditures and our revenues are placed, so this is our largest fund. The next one is the funds for Fund 21, which is donations and gifts. This would be if somebody would donate equipment, or example, like a car, or even a monetary donation towards field trips or athletic supplies. The next one is the special education fund, which is Fund 27. Self-explanatory, those are the expenses and revenues for our special education population. Fund 38 and 39 are non-referendum and referendum debt. Currently, the district has $3.3 million in non-referendum debt outstanding and $81.6 million in referendum debt outstanding. The next fund will be Fund 46 and Fund 41, which are our capital projects. Fund 41, the board approves a five-year capital project plan each year, which does annual repairs or upgrades to our buildings, which includes roofs as well as parking lots. And then Fund 46, which is a capital improvement fund, was established in 2020 and currently has $150,000 allocated towards it. Next is the food service fund, which is Fund 50. This is a program to supply lunch and breakfast to our students. It's a self-sufficient program. That means it has to bring in enough revenue to match or exceed its expenditures. And then finally, Fund 80, which is our community service fund, which pays for the ability to have the community use our buildings. A portion of our expenditures can go towards the Fund 80.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Okay. Move it on.
I'm going to keep going.
Oh, you're going to keep going?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'll let you.
Okay, great. To get into a little depth of the funds, again, this is the general operating fund, Fund 10. It is our largest fund. As of the end of 2022-23, we had $7.6 million in our fund balance. Please know that included in that number is a reserve for our self-funded health insurance that we started in January of 2023, as well as designated funds for curriculum as well as capital projects. For the 2023-24 school year, we are projecting with a balanced budget that our fund balance would stay the same as it did at the end of the previous year. Our expenditure total for the 2023-24 is $48,683,915.89, which is equal to our revenue and is an increase of $1.4 million compared to the previous year. Another way to look at our general fund is by graph. On the left-hand side is our revenues. Our two largest revenue sources are property taxes, which is about 51% of our revenue, and then state sources, which includes state aid and grants, is 43.11% of our revenue. In the 23-25 biennial budget, they did give all school districts an increase in their revenue limit per pupil of $325. That means that that $325 per pupil did increase the amount of revenue that school districts are allowed to have, but it's put on the property taxes. The state aid didn't necessarily increase their portion. But the district is strategically paying off our debt, in which we pay off our debt every other year, which then increased the shared costs, so that in turn has increased our state aid each year for the past three years. On the right-hand side of the slide is our expenditures. 46.5 approximately percent of it is spent on instructional services. About 35% of our expenses are on support services, and then the remaining 18.7% is on non-program transactions, which include a transfer to our special ed fund, voucher payments to private schools, as well as open enrollment out students. Some takeaways from this biennial budget. When building the budget, districts are given a cap in which we can only receive so much revenue each year. Our revenue is based on how many students that we have in our schools that we are educating. So on the third Friday of September, we take account of the students that we have sitting in our seats. We then subtract the open enrolled students in, and we add in the open enrolled students out to get our membership count, and that is what's used on our revenue limit calculation. In 2023-24, we had a decrease of students of 24, what I am calling belly buttons or heads in our district. We had a decrease of 28 four-year-old kindergarteners. We had an increase of 37 kindergarteners compared to the previous year. There is a declining enrollment exemption on the revenue limit calculation, which we did not qualify for this year. If your population decreases, they take an average of the three years of September counts, and if that average of three years of September counts is less than the previous three years of September counts, you can exemption on your revenue limit, which gives you additional revenue, to hopefully plan for the future loss in revenue for the one year. We did not have a decrease in our three-year average compared to the previous year, so we did not get this exemption. Also, in the biennial budget, there was an increase in the amount of our state aid that goes towards private schools. So part of our state aid that we receive does go to the private school voucher program. There was an increase in 20 students in this program from the previous year for a total expense of $468,355 of state aid that goes to the private schools that's on our revenue limit. State aid did increase, as I stated before, by 16.74%. That is strategically done by the district by adjusting our debt payments. And then the final property values, so the values of the resident's home as well as the businesses that are within the Germantown School District did increase by 9.5% over the previous year. The property tax levy, so the amount that the district is asking for on the property tax from the municipalities, did increase overall 8.59%. We have multiple municipalities, so some increased by more than the other ones, but that is the average increase. And then finally, the average mill rate decreased by 0.83%. The mill rate is the $1,000 value of your home. So if your home is worth $100,000, it's the amount the district is asking per $1,000 value. So that did increase, decrease, excuse me. This slide goes over the 10-year history of the fund balance for the school district. Between the years of 2014 to 2017, you can see that the district's fund balance is approximately 25%. And fund balance is the amount of money the district has on their general leisure compared to the expenses that they paid the previous year. So it's not necessarily the same dollar amount, but the percentage is based on what you've spent the previous year. So from 2014 to 2017, it was approximately 25%. Between the years of 2017 and 2020, the district did decide to spend some, decide to spend down some of the fund balance on capital projects during the referendum. And then since 2020, the district has made a goal to increase its fund balance each year to be more financially responsible. School districts should have a fund balance between 14 and 18% of its previous year expenditures. Currently, as of the end of last year, we are at 16.7%, and with a balanced budget, we should be at 16.7% again if everything stayed balanced to the budget. I do want you to be aware that of that 16.7%, 0.8% is designated to self-funded health insurance. 1.7% of that is designated for the curriculum and capital projects, so 14.2% of that is undesignedated. So I would say that we haven't reached the board goal of being between 14 and 18% yet because we are at the lower end of that. The next fund that I'm going to review is Special Projects Fund, which is the donations. Fund 21 is special education. Fund 27. Fund 27 is not allowed to have a balance each year. It has to be replenished from the general fund, so the balance each year at the end of the year is zero. The balance that you see here at the end of 2022, of $489,000, is in the categories of co-curricular athletics and site funds, so those are designated for specific purposes, and they're not necessarily district dollars. The rest of, in 2023-24, the budget with the balanced budget of $9.4 million, $65,000 of that revenue and expenditure is budgeted for donations. The balance of that is budgeted for the special education population. The next area is debt service. Again, there's Fund 38 referendum, excuse me, non-referendum debt and Fund 39 referendum debt balanced in, or budgeted for in there. As you can see, that we are increasing the revenues, or excuse me, the fund balance each year. It was $229,000 in 21-22, and it increased each year after that. That is part of the process that we are going through. We put money into an escrow every year, and then that money, once the debt is up to be callable, that whole amount will go out in payment. So that is planned for. We're not just collecting money to be in fund balance. And that money cannot be spent on anything but debt. So the revenues you see each year, we are planning on collecting the funds, but we have to hold them. So it was $13 million last year and $16 million this year, but you can see that the expenses don't match those. The expenses are just the payments that are due this current year. The capital projects fund, Fund 41 and Fund 46, I explained earlier. We are, we increased the levy for Fund 41, which is our five-year capital projects plan, each year by $50,000. So in 21-22, it was $400,000, and in 22-23, it was $450,000, but we designated the $150,000 into Fund 46 that one year. And then this year, we are to $500,000 with an expense of approximately $510,000, so we potentially might be able, might be using $10,000 worth of fund balance in that category. Food service, which is Fund 50, again, is a self-sustaining program. In 2021-22, they did receive additional revenue for COVID relief dollars. They are saving those dollars in their fund balance for future equipment purchases as they, their, excuse me, as their equipment in the kitchen expires, then they can have money to buy new equipment. They did buy a delivery truck this past year, so they used part of their fund balance for that. And then they have a pretty much balanced budget of revenues and expenditures, with the revenues slightly higher by $800 than the expenditures for this year. And then finally, the community service fund. I did state that this is part of our property tax levy. Because the community uses our facilities, we do pay a portion of some of our bills out of this fund. The state allows us to pay a portion depending on how much time in a year the community uses our facilities. Because we are asking for funds to be levied in Fund 80, it's state law that we have to, at the annual meeting and budget hearing, we have to list out some of the areas, or all of the areas, excuse me, in which we could put expenditures into Fund 80. So for example, utilities. So we take a portion of our utility bills, and it's based on a percentage, and we can put, we can pay part of our utility bills out of this. pay part of our utility bills out of this fund. The most rented areas or used areas by the public include the pool, the field house, the fitness center, performing arts center, our schools' gyms and cafeteriums. We do are allowed to pay a portion of our custodial and maintenance wages. The PAC coordinator does a lot of work with outside group rentals, so a portion of their wages can come out of the Fund 80 account. New to our district is that the school resource officers, a portion of their pay will be coming out of this account because they are part of our community and serve our community before the full amount was coming out of our general fund. So we've moved a portion of their pay to come out of Fund 80. The pay has not changed, it's just where the funds are coming from. And then finally, my last slide of the budget hearing goes over our enrollment. I did state earlier that our revenue is calculated, or a revenue limit is calculated based on the number of students that we educate. So this slide is showing you for the first six years of the 10-year history that I'm showing you, shows that the district was, had approximately 3,900 students. We did have a dip in 2020-21 due to COVID. And then you can see that in 2022-23, we did have an increase, which we started our 4K program. And then the count for 2023-24, this current year, is 3,790 students, with the average enrollment over the 10-year period being 3,851. This concludes my presentation, and I believe next we have public comment.
Yes. Thank you. We do have public comment. We will also have public comment during the regular school board meeting, which is after 7:00. So your comments for this meeting should be related to the budget. So anybody who signed up, please keep your comments related to discussions or questions that we have on budget-related items. First up, we have Kay Van Ecken. If you could come down to the mic in front here? Go on.
She said no.
Okay. Peggy Reader? Okay. Joseph Kitzinger? Lori Gilmore? Sandy Pia? Okay. That's all I have on the list. Does anybody have any questions or comments they'd like to present during the budget hearing? Are all of you looking to speak at the regular board meeting? Show hands. Okay. Please sign up on that list. We'll keep this list separate, and then please sign up on that list if you're interested in speaking there. Thank you. Any comments from the board, questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. We adjourned at 6:23. Thank you all for being here. It's nice to see a lot of public at our annual meeting. This doesn't happen very often. Usually, we have a handful of people if we're lucky. The annual budget meeting will start at 6:30. We can't start early, so we're going to have to wait a few minutes. So if you want to take a little break, we will re-meet at 6:30. If we could have everyone get settled, we're ready to get started. Again, residents in these two sections, you'll be part of the voting public, and if you're a non-resident, please come over to your left side of the auditorium. Welcome, everyone. It is 6:32. I'm calling this annual meeting to order the Germantown School District. My name is Brian Medved. I'm the board president. I will have the board introduce themselves, and then we'll have administration introduce themselves as well. Tracy, you want to start?
My name is Tracy Pollak. I'm one of the directors.
I'm Kim Hagan-Bathem, also one of the directors.
Russ Hayward, vice president.
Michael Loth, treasurer.
Eric Brown, director.
Dr. Reuter, you want to introduce your staff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Medved. This evening, we have with us our district team as well as our principal team. To my left is Ms. Brittany Alton-Dorf, our Director of Business and Auxiliary Services. We have Mr. Jake Mizziak, our Director of Teaching and Learning. Mr. Mike Nowak, our Director of Human Resources. Mrs. Crystal Callen, our Director of Pupil Services. Here from Germantown High School this evening, Mr. Joel Farron, our principal. Mr. Andrew Rooney, our Assistant Principal. And Mrs. Alex Fisher, our Dean of Students. From Kennedy Middle School this evening, we have Mrs. Jessica Garren, our principal. Way in the back there, Mr. Brandon Cole, Vice Principal. And our elementary team here tonight is Dr. Dana Crowett, Rockfield Elementary Principal. Mrs. Katie Cole, I believe had to step out. Our principal at Amy Bell. Mr. Andy Eisenbach, principal at County Line. And Mr. Tony Gonzalez, principal at MacArthur Elementary in the back.
Thank you. I'd also like to recognize our state senator representative, Dan Canot. Could you stand up? Thank you. Thanks for being here. We appreciate it. Official meeting notification, Dr. Reuter.
Public notice of all meetings has been given by communications from the superintendent's office to the public, to those news media who have requested such notices, and to the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, Northwest Now, Express News, and West Bend Daily News. Public notice has also been posted in schools throughout the district and on the Germantown School District website.
Thank you. Item C, elect a chairperson for the annual meeting. I'm happy to do it, but I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to elect Brian Medved, our president, as chairperson of the annual meeting.
Second.
Mr. Brown, I'll give you the second. Any discussion? And the audience will have you stand up if you're voting yea or nay, and we'll do this for the resolutions as well. You're part of the vote on all of the budget or the annual meeting topics tonight. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stand up.
Do you need a count?
As soon as Melissa gives the all-clear, we'll let you sit down.
Jake.
Okay, thank you. And all those opposed, please stand. Okay, thank you. I will represent the district for the meeting. Item D, report from district administrator, Dr. Reuter.
Thank you. As we reflect on the previous years as a district, we look to improve and live out our mission and vision. The 23-24 school year brings us many opportunities as we approach this year strategically. Preliminary data from the state of Wisconsin has shown that we continue and are improving our status as an exceeds expectations school per the state report card by the DPI. Additionally, we continue to be fiscally responsible, having eliminated short-term borrowing in the past year as a district, and continue to pay off referendum debt ahead of schedule. We are proud of our continued commitment to safety and look to refine our current practices to ensure the safety of every GSD student and staff member. We have developed strategic goals and actions to improve learning outcomes for all kids, the district's overall operations and financial health, and community connections to the Germantown School District. Thank you to the community members here tonight and all Germantown community members, our school board for your support. Thank you to all our GSD staff from Food Service, custodial staff, support staff, all of our teachers for making this district a great place for kids. I want to thank our entire district administrative team for being here tonight to support our annual meeting.
Thank you. Item E, report of the Board of Education, Mr. Medved. I am very pleased at the direction of the district. The past several years, we've had many hurdles to overcome with COVID. We've had budget issues. We've had referendum projects in the past. There's been a lot of issues that we've had to resolve. We have a couple of new board members on the board, and they were concerned about some of the things that were happening in the district, but I believe that overall, we're heading in the right direction. We're seeing things trend back up the way we want them to go. Our budget, our fund balance, everything seems to be running that balanced budget. Our fund balance is increasing to where we want it. Everything that we're trying to accomplish, including the most important part of what we do is educating our students. And I think the grades are going up, the engagement is going up, and parent engagement in the community has gone up, and that's all positives for this district. One of the things I always liked about Germantown, and the reason we moved here many moons ago over almost 30 years now, is to raise my children in a district, in a community, in a school district that cared about their students and cared about their kids, and the parents are engaged in our community, and that's a big part of why Germantown is as successful as we are. And all of your hard work with your kids is appreciated. We don't get kids coming in that aren't already ready to learn. You're working with them long before we ever get ahold of them, so all of that is very appreciated. I will also open it up to the boards if they would like to make any comments. Okay. Thank you. Treasures report, Fund 10 Capital Fund, Mr. Loth.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Brittany Alton-Dorf in just a minute, but before I do, I would like to thank everyone that worked on the budget for this next year. I know that the school principals put quite a bit of work into it, and also
We'll have everyone stand up, and we'll get a count of everyone, because all of you are going to be voting on these. I'll need someone to motion the referendum, and if anyone can read it, but we need you to read G1 or each one, and exactly how it's written on your agenda. So I'll entertain a motion for G1.
Inside your folders, there is a list of the resolutions and how to read them.
I'll go for it. "Now therefore be it resolved by the electors of the Germantown School District, Washington County, State of Wisconsin, that a tax be levied in the amount of $180,000 to operate a community services fund for the purpose of offsetting costs associated with general community use of the district's buildings and sites."
Second.
Mr. Pollock with the motion. Mr. Hayward with the second. Any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor?
Aye.
I should say, stand if you're able. If you can't, you can raise your hand as well. Thank you. Okay. All those opposed. Those that didn't stand, are you abstaining? Is that, yes? Okay. Thank you. Okay, moving on to tax resolution G2. I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. "Now therefore be it resolved by the electors of the Germantown School District, Washington County, State of Wisconsin, that a school tax be assessed against all taxable property within the Germantown School District in the sum of $41,471,276 necessary to operate and maintain the school district system and to finance the recommended general operating fund. The debt service funds, including the energy exemption, non-referendum, and referendum debt levies, the capital expansion fund, the community service fund, and all obligations for the 2023/2024 school year."
A second.
Mr. Loth with the motion. Mr. Hayward with the second. Any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor?
Aye.
I should say, stand if you're able. If you can't, you can raise your hand as well. Thank you. Okay. All those opposed. Those that didn't stand, are you abstaining? Is that, yes? Okay. Thank you. Okay, moving on to tax resolution G2. I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. "Now therefore be it resolved by the electors of the Germantown School District, Washington County, State of Wisconsin, that a school tax be assessed against all taxable property within the Germantown School District in the sum of $41,471,276 necessary to operate and maintain the school district system and to finance the recommended general operating fund. The debt service funds, including the energy exemption, non-referendum, and referendum debt levies, the capital expansion fund, the community service fund, and all obligations for the 2023/2024 school year."
A second.
Mr. Loth with the motion. Ms. Hagan-Bathem with the second. Any discussion?
I'd like to offer two amendments to this motion, please.
Okay. Can you come down to the mic, please?
Sure.
Good evening. My name is William Walter. I'm a resident of Germantown, and I would like to include language to the motion of G2. Due to the school district receiving a 4.9% increase in state funding and increasing budgets for each department by 4.9%, I believe that, or, excuse me, I would like to motion to require that teacher salary increases for the 2023-24 school year must be at least 4.9% increase over last year's salary. They will be retroactive to the start of the fiscal year, July 1st, 2023. I further motion that moving forward, annual teacher salary increases must be at least a minimum of 3.5% increase or tied to the CPI percentage, whichever is greater, and shall take effect with the start of each fiscal year, beginning July 1st, 2024."
Okay. We have a motion? Do we have a second? Frank.
Frank. I'm sorry. The motion is for the tax levy, so you would have to adjust the motion to approve what the property taxpayers were going to pay on their property taxes?
I believe this is pursuant to Chapter 120.10, Powers of Annual Meeting, Number 8, Tax for Operation. Would this not fall under the Tax for Operation?
This is approving the amount we're going to be sending to the municipalities to be able to support the expenditures, but that would be how much the municipalities are going to pay the school district throughout the year on property taxes. So it's not related to the budget. It's just the amount that the state authorizes us to tax the property taxpayers.
One moment. My apologies. So I cannot dictate as part of the public tax assessment that the increase to teacher salary would fall under the operations budget?
Correct. That would be more under when the budget gets approved, and that would be at the next board meeting, not the one tonight, November 20th, 23rd?
20th.
20th, I'm sorry. The budget will get approved, so we approved a preliminary budget in July, and then after the annual meeting, you approve another final budget, in which then I would suggest that you bring your motion adjustments.
Excellent.
Sorry.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments, questions? Hearing done. All those in favor?
Nope.
You got one?
Question. So, do you understand how to calculate the tax rate? Is this a bottom line? What tax rate are we paying?
No. This is basically, I'll let Brittany explain it, but it's the mill rate that we apply to your tax bill every year. This is not over and above anything. This is the normal process that we go through. Can you explain that, Brittany?
So this is the maximum amount of property taxes the school district is allowed to ask for per our revenue limit calculation. I'm going to tell you that if your property values have increased over the previous year, your property tax bill may increase, but the amount we're asking per thousand of your property value is less than it was last year. So if your value of your house stayed exactly the same, your property tax bill would be less. But if your property values have increased, even though we're asking for less per thousand, your property tax bill might be larger. And again, this is over multiple municipalities, so it depends on where your house is located.
And this is only one part of your tax bill. The school district is a taxing authority. Your village or city is also a taxing authority, so your taxes can go up and down based on what they tax you as well. This is just the district, the school district. Any other questions? Oh, go ahead.
Is the number that you gave during the motion different than the number that's on the screen? Why would you do that as an E?
Good question.
It's the same. He might have, on the, on the, I'm sorry. The number on the document that I provided the board to read from and the number on the screen is the same, just so you're aware. The way it was read might have been different. I don't remember that.
The number I have is $41,471,261. Is that?
That's correct.
Did I transpose something? No?
That'll be the official number. Okay. Any other questions? The other motion? Yeah, we're going to go back quickly to the motion that was presented. We did not have a second on that motion, so that motion has failed, and we shouldn't be entertaining that motion at this time anyway. So we're going to go back to our original G2 tax resolution, and we're going to take a vote on that. So all those in favor, please stand. Or raise your hand.
Have they raised their vote, or are they have a question?
Voting.
That's for voting. Thank you. And all those opposed. And the rest are abstained? Yes? Okay. Thank you. Moving on to other resolutions, G3. I'll entertain a motion.
So, "Now therefore be it resolved that the electors of the Germantown School District, Washington County, State of Wisconsin, authorize the Board of Education to acquire by purchase or condemnation real estate and structures and facilities pertinent to such real estate necessary for school district educational purposes or no longer needed for district educational purposes."
Second.
Ms. Hagan-Bathem with the motion.
I'd like to move to make an amendment to your motion.
Please come down. And Mr. Pollock with the second.
Good evening. My name is Sandy Pia. I'm a Germantown resident, and I'd like to motion to prohibit the sale or disposal of school district property without obtaining approval from the electors of the Germantown School District at a special meeting called for the purpose of authorizing such sale or disposal.
Okay.
Yeah, is that the writing? Yeah. So I just want you to be aware, this is for the annual meeting between today and the following annual meeting next year. So if you would like that also in next year's, you'd have to come back with a new motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Pia. Do I have a second? You're taking it?
No.
Oh. We have a second. Can I have your name? Okay, Mom, thank you. Okay. We have a motion. We'll take the amendment first, and we'll vote on that.
I have a question.
I'm sorry.
Isn't a no vote to this resolution what the amendment is?
Exactly.
If they don't give us the authorization to act on their behalf, we would have to bring a sale, for instance, in front of the electors.
Correct. Correct. And this is basically standard operating procedure to allow the board to negotiate contracts and buy property or sell property. It doesn't happen very often, but it gives us the power and authority for one year, and we have to come back to the community every year to allow us to do that, to do the negotiation. So we'll go back to the amendment that was presented by Ms. Pia, and we'll take a vote. All those in favor? Good. Okay, thank you. All those opposed. Good. Okay, thank you. All those opposed. Now, even though that mutes the other motion, the As have it on that one. That mutes the second motion, we still have to vote on it. So we're going to vote again on Resolution G3, to authorize the Board of Education to sell or lease district-owned property. All those in favor? Thank you. And all those opposed. Thank you. Now, even though that mutes the other motion, the As have it on that one. That mutes the second motion, we still have to vote on it. So we're going to vote again on Resolution G3, to authorize the Board of Education to sell or lease district-owned property. All those in favor? Thank you. And all those opposed. Thank you. Now, even though that mutes the other motion, the As have it on that one. That mutes the second motion, we still have to vote on it. So we're going to vote again on Resolution G3, to authorize the Board of Education to sell or lease district-owned property. All those in favor? Thank you. And all those opposed. Thank you. Now, even though that mutes the other motion, the As have it on that one. That mutes the second motion, we still have to vote on it. So we're going to vote again on Resolution G3, to authorize the Board of Education to sell or lease district-owned property. All those in favor? Thank you. And all those opposed. Thank you. Now, even though that mutes the other motion, the As have it on that one. That mutes the second motion, we still have to vote on it. So we're going to vote again on Resolution G3, to authorize the Board of Education to sell or lease district-owned property. All those in favor? Thank you. And all those opposed. Thank you. Now, even though that mutes the other motion, the As have it on that one. That mutes the second motion, we still have to vote on it. So we're going to vote again on Resolution G3, to authorize the Board of Education to sell or lease district-owned property. All those in favor? Thank you. And all those opposed. Thank you. Now, even though that mutes the other motion, the As have it on that one. That mutes the second motion, we still have to vote on it. So we're going to vote again on Resolution G3, to authorize the Board of Education to sell or lease district-owned property. All those in favor? Thank you. Now, even though that mutes the other motion, the As have it on that one. That mutes the second motion, we still have to vote on it. So we're going to vote again on Resolution G3, to authorize the Board of Education to sell or lease district-owned property. All those in favor? Thank you. Now, even though that mutes the other motion, the As have it on that one. That mutes the second motion, we still have to vote on it. So we're going to vote again on Resolution G3, to authorize the Board of Education to sell or lease district-owned property. All those in favor? Thank you. And all those opposed. Thank you. Now, even though that mutes the other motion, the As have it on that one. That mutes the second motion, we still have to vote on it. So we're going to vote again on Resolution G3, to authorize the Board of Education to sell or lease district-owned property. All those in favor? Thank you. And all those opposed. Thank you. Now, even though that mutes the other motion, the As have it on that one. That mutes the second motion, we still have to vote on it. So we're going to vote again on Resolution G3, to authorize the Board of Education to sell or lease district-owned property. All those in favor? Thank you. And all those opposed. Thank you. Now, even though that mutes the other motion, the As have it on that one. That mutes the second motion, we still have to vote on it. So we're going to vote again on Resolution G3, to authorize the Board of Education to sell or lease district-owned property. All those in favor? Thank you. And all those opposed. Thank you. Now, even though that mutes the other motion, the As have it on that one. That mutes the second motion, we still have to vote on it. So we're going to vote again on Resolution G3, to authorize the Board of Education to sell or lease district-owned property. All those in favor? Thank you. And all those opposed. Thank you. Now, even though that mutes the other motion, the As have it on that one. That mutes the second motion, we still have to vote on it. So we're going to vote again on Resolution G3, to authorize the Board of Education to sell or lease district-owned property. All those in favor? Thank you. And all those opposed. Thank you. Now, even though that mutes the other motion, the As have it on that one. That mutes the second motion, we still have to vote on it. So we're going to vote again on Resolution G3, to authorize the Board of Education to sell or lease district-owned property. All those in favor? Thank you. And all those opposed. Thank you. And all those opposed. Thank you. And all those opposed. Thank you. Now, even though that mutes the other motion, the As have it on that one. That mutes the second motion, we still have to vote on it. So we're going to vote again on Resolution G3, to authorize the Board of Education to sell or lease district-owned property. All those in favor? Thank you. And all those opposed. Thank you. And all those opposed. Thank you. Now, even though that mutes the other motion, the As have it on that one. That mutes the second motion, we still have to vote on it. So we're going to vote again on Resolution G3, to authorize the Board of Education to sell or lease district-owned property. All those in favor? Thank you. And all those opposed. Thank you. And all those opposed. Thank you. Now, even though that mutes the other motion, the As have it on that one. That mutes the second motion, we still have to vote on it. So we're going to vote again on Resolution G3, to authorize the Board of Education to sell or lease district-owned property. All those in favor? Thank you. And all those opposed. Thank you. And all those opposed. Thank you. Now, even though that mutes the other motion, the As have it on that one. That mutes the second motion, we still have to vote on it. So we're going to vote again on Resolution G3, to authorize the Board of Education to sell or lease district-owned property. All those in favor? Thank you. And all those opposed. Thank you. Now, even though that mutes the other motion, the As have it on that one. That mutes the second motion, we still have to vote on it. So we're going to vote again on Resolution G3, to authorize the Board of Education to sell or lease district-owned property. All those in favor? Thank you. And all those opposed. Thank you. Now, even though that mutes the other motion, the As have it on that one. That mutes the second motion, we still have to vote on it. So we're going to vote again on Resolution G3, to authorize the Board of Education to sell or lease district-owned property. All those in favor? Thank you. And all those opposed. Thank you. Now, even though that mutes the other motion, the As have it on that one. That mutes the second motion, we still have to vote on it. So we're going to vote again on Resolution G3, to authorize the Board of Education to sell or lease district-owned property. All those in favor? Thank you. And all those opposed. Thank you. Now, even though that mutes the other motion, the As have it on that one. That mutes the second motion, we still have to vote on it. Thank you. And all those opposed. And the rest are abstained? Yes? Okay. Thank you. Moving on to other resolutions, G3, I'll entertain a motion.
So now therefore be it resolved that the electors of the Germantown School District, Washington County, State of Wisconsin authorize the Board of Education to acquire by purchase or condemnation real estate and structures and facilities pertinent to such real estate necessary for school district educational purposes or no longer needed for district educational purposes.
Second. Say something with the motion.
I'd like to move to make an amendment to your motion.
Please come down. And Mr. Pollak with the second.
Good evening. My name is Sandy Pia. I'm a Germantown resident. And I'd like to motion to prohibit the sale or disposal of school district property without obtaining approval from the electors of the Germantown School District at a special meeting called for the purpose of authorizing such sale or disposal.
Okay.
Yeah, well, is that the writing? So I just want you to be aware, this is for the annual meeting between today and the following annual meeting next year. So if you would like that also in next year's, you'd have to come back with a new motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Pia. Do I have a second? You're taking it?
No.
Oh. We have a second. Can I have your... Can I have your name? Okay, Mom, thank you. Okay. We have a motion. We'll take the amendment first and we'll vote on that.
I have a question.
I'm sorry.
Isn't a no vote to this resolution what the amendment is?
Exactly.
If they don't give us the authorization to act on their behalf, we would have to bring a sale, for instance, in front of the electors.
Correct. Correct. And this is basically standard operating procedure to allow the board to negotiate contracts and buy property or sell property. It doesn't happen very often, but it gives us the power and authority for one year and we have to come back to the community every year to allow us to do that, to do the negotiation. So we'll go back to the amendment that was presented by Ms. Pia and we'll take a vote. All those in favor? Good. Okay, thank you. All those opposed. Thank you. Now even though that mutes the other motion, the A's have it on that one. That mutes the second motion, we still have to vote on it. So we're gonna vote again on Resolution G3 to authorize the Board of Education to sell or lease district-owned property. All those in favor? Thank you. And all those opposed. Okay. So the Nays have it. Thank you. Moving on to other resolutions, G4, I'll entertain a motion.
Now therefore be it resolved that the electors of the Germantown School District, Washington County, State of Wisconsin, that the yearly school board salaries as established at the October 23rd, 2023, school district annual meeting for the period of July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2024 should be as follows. President, five thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. Vice President, five thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. Treasurer, five thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. Clerk, five thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. Other board members, five thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. Be it further resolved that the school board members be paid forty dollars for full day special functions outside of the district and for the annual tour of the schools and twenty dollars for half-day special functions or evening functions outside of the district. Out-of-district mileage shall be reimbursed at the current IRS per mile rate. Reimbursement shall be made for other actual necessary expenses such as meals, lodging, et cetera.
Second. Mr. Pollak with the motion. Mr. Ebert with the second. Any discussion? Come on down.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Joshua Johnson. I'm a resident of Germantown, Wisconsin, and I motion to set the compensation for each member of the Germantown Board of Education at eighty dollars per Board of Education meeting that they physically attend and at twenty dollars per hour for each committee meeting that they are a committee member of and physically attend. Time sheet shall be maintained by the district administrator and retained for at least seven years. There will be no additional compensation for site visits or any training that the Board of Education members attend. Travel expense reimbursement will need to be submitted to the electors for approval at the annual meeting before any reimbursement payments to board members may occur.
I just have one quick question. So I understand the first part, but then the second part with the expense... I'm sorry, the expense with the annual... At the annual meeting, they'll have... Are you asking them to be aware? It says travel expense reimbursement will need to be submitted to the electorates for approval at the annual meeting before any reimbursement payment to the board may occur. Is that... You want it all planned at the beginning of the year for the year? Or usually it is throughout the year? For example, if they took... Went to a conference in the Dells, it would be different than if they went to a conference in Green Bay. So I just wanna make sure I know what we're collecting.
Yeah, I would say planned for at the beginning of the year, as it states, as it's set forth, the parameters of the eighty dollars and the twenty dollars per hour.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Johnson. Do I have a second? Okay, see a couple out there? Can I have your last name?
William Walter.
Walter, Mr. Walter, thank you. All right, we'll take a vote on the amendment first that was just presented by Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, please stand. Okay, all those opposed. Okay. The Y's have it. We're also gonna vote on the actual Resolution G4 to raise the salaries. All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed.
Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry to interrupt this meeting. We have an incident that's occurring over at Kennedy Middle School now with police presence, so we are going into a lockdown in this building. So no one can leave this building. We're gonna secure the perimeter and until we have further communication from Germantown Police Department, we can excuse you. So we're gonna have to pause this annual meeting. That's all I can share at this time, and we'll be working with the police department. So we ask that you just wait in here. Bathrooms are available, but this building is in full lockdown. We can. I would like to make sure, though, the operations of everyone's safety is first and foremost before we continue the meeting.
Technically, it needs to be an open meeting, so I don't know if that qualifies.
I say we keep going.
Okay. Okay, the Nays have it. I'm not sure that we can continue because this needs to be an open, public forum, and if we lock the doors, I'm not sure that qualifies. So we may have to pause for a little while here. I apologize for the inconvenience, I really do. Hey, I have 7:09. Let's pause, take a break. If anybody needs to use the facilities, we'll hopefully come back to this as quickly as possible. I would love to do that. I like the idea, but I don't know legally that we can do it. That's my concern.
Doors are closed.
We have closed doors and locked doors. That means someone can't come in to an open meeting. That's my concern.
So when we rezone... When we rezone that there were people someone's... They wouldn't be allowed to come in, correct?
Correct. Correct. If anyone showed up now, we wouldn't allow them in. Thank you.
We're hedging on the side of doing the right thing.
I'm sorry.
Would they be allowing afterwards, i.e. you stop for thirty minutes and then doors open and people who have sex and...
My name is Donna Bather. Okay? So it's nice to meet you. The school superintendent has to devote time to the incident going on. He has to devote time to the meeting. Meeting is an open, public meeting by law. It is now a law for an open, public meeting. Now, you already take away their salary, which is shameful, because you have no idea what goes on behind the scenes that the administration...
Yep.
She also added a bunch of accounting to you.
I can't do this part because he wants the all your travel expenses at the annual meeting. So that's right now, so... You doing that? Mm-hmm, right. There's someone on the roof. Heather, can you turn my mic off? Does Heather turn my mics off?
Uh, she... No. Not me. She's... I think you...
Okay, we are able to open the building. We will finish the budget meeting or the annual meeting, and then we will allow people to leave. We have not made the determination whether we will continue the board meeting. We'll make that determination shortly. So hopefully we'll be able to get you out of here. We don't have any details. We know there's an incident, that's all we know. The police are on the scene. They're locked in the gym currently. Okay. I'll give everybody a couple minutes to resettle, and then we'll continue on. We'll say it's 7:15 right now, we'll say 7:18, we'll get started again. There's a couple people out in the hallways and in the bathroom, so we'll give them a minute. I don't have any further updates. We'll get through the final resolution, G5, and then we'll let everyone go. I'll entertain a motion. Is it related to G5?
Mr. Johnson, I have a clarification on the section that I asked you about before. It talks about that you want the reimbursement expenses planned prior to the annual meeting, which we're at today, so how would you like this year to go? Okay, so you're...
Brittany?
I'm sorry.
We've voted on his motion, so we moved on.
Okay. Sorry.
There's no amending that after the vote took place to further clarification.
Okay, we're still on the G4.
May I read my motion?
On order, we have to get through G5 first.
G5, I'm sorry.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the electors of the Germantown School District, Washington County, State of Wisconsin authorize the Germantown Board of Education to establish the date and place for the 24-25 annual meeting, with the annual meeting starting at approximately 6:30 p.m., excluding the evening of the first day of school of the 2024-2025 school year.
Second.
Mr. Pollak with the motion, Ms. Higginbotham with the second. Any discussion?
I have a motion.
Okay.
Is it to G5?
Good evening. My name is Kay Van Aken. I'm a resident of Germantown, Wisconsin, and I motion to prohibit Germantown School District and Germantown School District Board of Education from using any district funds to obtain legal services or counsel to defend itself, the district or district administration from any lawsuit, OCR compliant, or discrimination complaint involving any allegations because of any board policy or action taken by the board or any administrator.
We still have to handle G5? So we have to finish that unless that's pursuant to G5, which I don't think it is, because we're setting a time for the meeting next year.
May I give you this?
The resolution is regarding setting the annual meeting for next year. So, the motion that I believe you have in front of you is pertaining to the resolution that is up.
Well, I proposed my motion before you gave the G5 back there, and you did not...
We followed the agenda, ma'am.
As a public meeting, we have to tell the public what we're discussing that was not on the agenda. We can't make a motion that's not related to what people know about. That's something that more people would have been able to come if they were either forward or against it. So, it has to be public. We can't surprise people at the last second and say this is what we're gonna do.
The amendments were allowed because they pertain to the resolution that was published.
So you are not gonna accept my motion?
Well, we're on G5 right now.
A, we're on G5, and B, it's not published in the agenda packet. So public wasn't given proper notice of that motion, so we'd be in violation of open laws.
So will I be able to speak after G5?
It appears that's the end of the agenda.
Pardon?
It appears that's the end of the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, any discussion on G5, as it was presented? All right, all those in favor, please stand. Okay, all those opposed. See, none that passes. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Mr. Ewer with the motion, Ms. Higginbotham with the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye. We're adjourned.
Opposed? We are adjourned at 7:26. Again, thank you all for coming. It's great to have so many people here participating. We are gonna find out what's going on, and if we can continue with the board meeting or not. Thank you all.